I'd like to call the Tuesday, April 16th, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got a presentation tonight, and I see Mr. Mike Newsill's in the audience. Come and join me. Mike's on the tree board. Those that might recognize him, he was a city employee for a long number of years.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years and decided to retire. But before that, Mike actually was on the tree board. We've got a tree board, I believe it's thirty years old about now, and Mike was on the original tree board before he was an employee. And then when he retired, got back onto the tree board. So Mike is a certified arborist and just give him back to the community for urban forestry. So on behalf of the city, I want to give to the tree board proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Papillion has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the thirtieth consecutive year and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Papillion and urge all citizens to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program. And be it further resolved that I urge citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thanks for doing what you do, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Want to share a little bit, maybe, what's going on with Arbor Day?
Sure.
Thank you.
Arbor Day is Friday, this Friday, and we're going to have an Arbor Day ceremony in Halleck Park. And we'll be planting two trees this year. One is going to be commemorative tree for OPPD and all the help they've given us through the years. We thought that would be a really good thing to do. And the other, and that's going to be a bur oak. And then we've got a, let's see, what we were planting, a heritage oak we're going to put in our arboretum. Our city has always been supportive of the tree program. And you can tell by the street trees and the arboretum we have that there has been support by the leaders and all the citizens, too. We think our urban forest is something to be regarded as really important. We have some special people that have helped us through the years. At the Arbor Day Ceremony, the Junior Women's Club run a poster program, and they have all the schools do posters. And we have winners that we're going to give at the Arbor Day Ceremony. And the Lions Club has helped us do our pruning and mulching for years, and there's just a lot of people have been involved, and it's really appreciated. So come and join us at the Arbor Day Ceremony at 1:00 this Friday. And we're going to have seedlings there, which usually OPPD gives us, and so you can take a tree home.
A week from Friday.
A week from Friday.
The 26th, right?
Okay, that's what it is.
All right.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I'd be by myself.
Mike, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you very much for your support.
Appreciate it. Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of retirements, Carla Rue Piper has provided notice that she's going to be retiring on August 2nd. Congratulations, Carla. She's given us plenty of notice, but that will, of course, generate a search to fill that position. And we will have a nice celebration as that day draws near. So again, congratulations and thanks for everything you've done. Good point, good point. Quick reminder of cleanup days. They're scheduled for April 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th. Again, located at the public worksite, 99th Circle and Portal Road. And then additionally, just a reminder that the Papillion Landing Community Center tour is scheduled for Tuesday, April 30th, at 4:30 PM. Again, we'll continue to remind you of that tour. Lastly, if you had a chance to look at my Administrator's Report, I included a public notice. We are generating an RFP for insurance broker services. If you recall, we left LARM for general liability and workers' compensation insurance back in 2014. The cities of Hastings, Holdridge, La Vista, and Papillion partnered to find other insurance company coverage. Since that time, we've been with Gallagher as our insurance broker, and we've had insurance with Travelers. So again, since it's been four years, we're deciding to go out for an RFP and look again for additional options. I just wanted to let you know at some future point, we'll be asking you to vote on a new broker. Thank you, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Klug.
Can I take C4 off in a second?
C4 was polled, and Councilman Jaworski seconds. Do you have any proponents? Do you have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C4.
8 a.m., 0 n.
Motion passes. Item C4, Resolution R190065. A resolution to appoint Troy Florence to the Civil Service Commission for a five-year term from May 2019 to May 2024, introduced by the mayor. Is there a council member that will? Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190065?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do you have any proponents? I will note that Mr. Florence is here. I don't know if you want to say anything, but thanks for being here. Do you have any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Jaworski.
I just want to. I just polled it to recognize Troy and to thank him for doing this.
And if people are not aware of the Civil Service Commission, we've got a lot of students here, and I know people watching it. Civil Service Commission is not an appointed board that meets that often, but when it does, it is absolutely critically important. It's an effective judge and a jury. If there's anything going on in the realm of hiring or firing a police officer or a fireman, and hiring of the police chief and the fire chief, the Civil Service actually runs that process to try to keep politics out of it. And they create a list, and they bring the top candidates to us for selection. So it's a really important one, especially if there's ever a dispute. And thankfully, I think in twelve years, we haven't had a dispute that's gone to them. But if they would, they would actually rule on that dispute, and that holds. So they are a judge. So somebody who understands personnel, somebody who understands city operations, somebody that understands legal, really, really important. So, Mr. Florence, thank you very much for your willingness to step in and serve. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
8 a.m., 0 n.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, item E1. Ordinance 1838, An Ordinance to Annex Certain Real Estate to the City of Papillion, Nebraska, and to Provide for an Effective Date. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do you have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. That'll be voted on next meeting. Item E2, Ordinance 1839, An Ordinance to Change the Official Zoning Map of the City of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code, to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the City of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing, and I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R190061. A resolution to approve an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Papillion, Nebraska and the City of Gretna, Nebraska regarding the city's present and future jurisdictional authority boundaries relative exclusively to one another. This was tabled from the April 2nd meeting, and I will state for the record that we already have a motion by Councilman Ingberg and a second by Councilman Jaworski on the floor. So I will call for any proponents. Do you have any opponents? Any council discussion? If not, please vote.
Mayor.
Yes. Mr. Mumgaard.
I'm sorry, I was a little slow on my phone. No, I'm going to vote against this, and I just want to take a moment to explain why. I've had the privilege of being here on the council long enough to have voted on, I believe this is the fourth time that I've voted on a boundary agreement. And, you know, I'm not against boundary agreements. I realize that the nature of the county we have, we have to have that. And I have voted for all the previous ones. But as I sit around and see how development has occurred, I never fail but to see places where we were wrong in our prior boundary agreements. And maybe that's inevitable, we'll always be wrong in some way. But I look at those, and I see that in some ways, they have failed to account for the growth of Sarpy County and the growth of Papillion in particular. And we all can, anybody that's been here very long can certainly sit around and look around Papillion and see that growth here occurs exceedingly fast. I'm constantly struck by that. So when I look at this agreement, I'm for an agreement. I don't have any problem with where it talks about where the interchange would be, but I feel that it fails to adequately account for the highway that will eventually come around and connect to the interchange. It's not an, you know, to say that there's an interchange going to be there, well, sure, but there's always a road, a highway or something that connects to that interchange. And I think the state has made it clear that the highway that is actually 34 down on Highway 75 is going to go down Plattview Road, swing around Springfield, and eventually come up and hit this interchange. That's one of the reasons they're building the interchange. I don't think that this agreement adequately accounts for what the area will be like when that happens. And I concede that that may not happen for many, many years. But as I sit back and look at the boundary agreements that I voted for in the past, I think, well, guess what? That's what you thought at the time then, too. And so principally, the failure to account for how that highway is going to come up and attach to the interchange and how this agreement will have an irrational split of authority once that highway is there, I just can't vote for it. I, you know, I'd love to see us go back and negotiate some more because I think we can come up with a better plan that will more properly define where these two cities will sit in 20, 30 years. So I'll have to vote against it.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I agree with what Mr. Mumgaard's saying. And I've heard people say, well, this gives us a seat at the table in determining where this interchange will go. And I think that's right. But in every, at every map I looked at that was presented to us, Papillion's getting more or less a toehold, just a toehold to the interchange, but not the surrounding area because the map always juts back towards Papillion. And Gretna makes a large land grab in some of the instances and a smaller one in the others, but in each instance, Papillion's getting nothing of this future highway that Mr. Mumgaard references. I think he's exactly right. So for that reason, I cannot support it. I do not believe it's in the best long-term interests of Papillion to do it, and I do think we can get a better deal. And no deal is better than this deal, in my view.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. I plan to vote for this, and I guess one question I would have would be with regard to the annexation that Gretna did. And I would hope that as a city council and as the mayor, that we would encourage Sarpy County to continue, push forward with what we believe as being an illegal annexation.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Well, I'm going to support it for a couple of reasons. First of all, as Mr. Stube said, we still have that other matter sitting out in Sarpy County as far as Gretna's previous annexation. I also think, too, that, you know, we've looked at this for probably a year and a half. Councilpeople have had plenty of opportunity in the last year and a half, and those that weren't here a year and a half ago have certainly had times since December when we've had several meetings about it, to ask questions, to express concerns. And I guess I want to thank Chris Myers and her staff, particularly along with the City of Gretna, for being adults and being able to work out an agreement where, did we get everything we wanted? Perhaps not. Did Gretna? I doubt it. So neither city got exactly what they wanted, but we came as adults to the table to try to come up with a workable solution that would help the City of Papillion grow. It will, I assume since they approved it, will help Gretna grow as they wish, and it will also help Sarpy County as a whole grow. So for that reason, I'm going to vote for it because Councilman Mumgaard's right, it's hard to predict where growth is going to go and how it's going to happen. That's always been difficult. That's also why we do our comp plans as often as we do. But when it comes to this situation, I think both cities really have good faith at the end, at least, try to come up with a workable solution. And I happen to think that that interchange is valuable enough to do nothing as harmful to our citizens in Papillion. So I'll vote for it.
Thank you. I've thought back and forth about this an awful lot. We've talked about it, like Councilman Ingberg said, a year and a half. We've given a lot of direction, or some of us have given a lot of direction, to what we would hope would happen there. So it's not an easy decision. I know we always would like to do more, whether that is control more land, support our constituents more. There are things that we always can see to do better or to do more. At another point, we also have to realize that when you do that, especially when working with another community, they are doing the same thing. They are working for the betterment of their community. Realizing that and seeing that, we have come together, we've been able to talk, we've asked several of our city staff to go and have negotiations. I think this is going to end up being a good thing for the City of Papillion. It's going to give us another spot at the interstate. It's going to be another entrance to our fine community. And I think it shows a real partnership of being able to work with other communities and working with all communities of all sizes, just like we work with Sarpy County. They provide some support to us, we work back with them. I think this is showing that we can communicate as governmental bodies and that we can work through things, and we don't have to rely on court systems to help us reach agreements. So I am going to be supporting this.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? If not, please vote. If you'd voted before, we did clear the slate because discussion was occurring, so please revote.
8 a.m., 0 n. By Sunday, Mumgaard and Gaines.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F2. Resolution R190066. A resolution to extend emergency water rates to SID 97 Hawaiian Village for an additional 90 days due to flooding. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190066? Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Second by Councilman Sunday. Do you have any proponents? Do you have any opponents? Any council discussion?
8 a.m., 0 n.
Motion passes. Next is item F3. Resolution R190071. A resolution to prove a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM. Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located northeast of the intersection of 132nd Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Prairie Queen LLC. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190071? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Glover. Do you have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Motion passes. Next is item F4. A resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Prairie Queen subdivision agreement. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190072? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Motion passes. Item F5. Ordinance 1834. An ordinance to amend Section 205249D4 of Chapter 205 zoning, Article 36, off-street parking, having to do with the regulators for parking recreational vehicles and trailers in a residential district. The applicant is the City of Papillion. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1834? Motion by Councilwoman Klug. Second by Councilman Gaines. Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, I'm going to vote for this. Now, when we adopted the regulations prohibiting certain parking of RV and trailers on residential areas, I guess I made it clear what my views were, and I won't repeat them. But I'm going to vote for this because I see this as largely an unnecessary increase and mostly an increase that doesn't really create the kind of harm that I see would happen if we were talking about the front yard. My fear here is that by increasing the length of the RV, we will see more violations because these will be parked along the side of the house, and they'll jut out into the front yard, which will be a violation. And I would emphasize to anybody who might be watching this or listening that we only enforce this ordinance on a complaint basis. So if there are people in the neighboring areas to this who see that and don't want it, they ought to make a complaint. I approach these by looking at the balance of harm that can come from it and good that can come from it. And I just don't see that there's a sufficient harm that will come from this to vote against it, although I would say that I'm convinced that the people in my district don't want to do this. They don't think this is a good idea. I ran for reelection, and it was very clear what my position was, and I didn't get questioned about it. So I hope we don't go any further than this, but I will vote for this and see how it works out.
Thank you. Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I just wanted to offer that I brought this forward as several of the constituents in my area were asking questions even after the fact. And it started to become clear to me that we had picked a number of 35 feet, and upon doing some studying, I discovered that many of these trailers are getting up to be about 40 and 42 feet. As I thought about it, I just didn't think it was really right to make somebody's already in their possession RV illegal, especially if we could keep it out of people's front yards so that it isn't obscuring the view of the neighbors. Because that was what a lot of the concern was when people were addressing it to me. So I think this is an opportunity for us to allow them to have their slightly larger RVs, keep them on the side of their house, and just extend into their own backyard. So I certainly hope that the other council members understand where I'm coming from, and I hope you'll help me to pass this for those RV owners.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this. I think it's a small step. Last week, I announced that I intended to offer an amendment tonight. I've been convinced by others that that's not probably wise at this stage, so I'm not going to. But I am, I am going to be trying to do it the correct way, that is, to work with staff, try to get something through committee to make further changes and improvements, I believe, to the current parking situation here in Papillion. I am, and I ran as a big property rights advocate, liberty advocate. We do pledge allegiance to the flag where we say with liberty and justice for all. And liberty includes property rights. It doesn't just include the choices that you get to make as to what you want to do with your life, but also your property rights. And I do understand, I do understand that there are concerns that neighbors might have as to appearance, but I think that's referencing junkers that aren't kept up to standard. And I think we already have prohibition against that right now. I think a wiser choice so that we don't pit neighbor against neighbor and have people calling each other in is to have a setback, a setback from the street and the sidewalk that's safe and considers those factors. But just because somebody doesn't like the way your property looks isn't enough, in my view, in America, to ban it altogether. I don't think that's what we're about. It's not what I'm about. And so I am going to be trying to further something down the road and get it through committee and staff and planning commission, and ultimately to the council. And hopefully, everybody will keep an open mind. I hope they will. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
I became aware of the change in length. My first reaction was, why? I'm going to support it for many of the same reasons that Councilman Mumgaard is. If all of you recall, back when we discussed this the last time, we spent a great deal of time talking to RV owners, to people that didn't want RVs parked in their neighborhood at all. And as a consequence of that, if you recall, I brought forth a couple items that were incorporated, one of which is changing the process for people calling in complaints to the mayor's hotline. And that kind of alleviated the problem that Mr. Sunday alluded to, that it was a problem that existed that doesn't appear to have reoccurred. Second thing is to make, we did not allow or did not outlaw RV parking at all. What we did do is adjust the way the measures were done to make it more consistent for the enforcement staff for the city because they were having a difficult time enforcing it. And we went to a box measuring system, if you recall, to make it more fair, more equitable. It certainly made it much easier for the homeowners that had RVs and our code enforcement staff to be able to deal with any complaints that did happen to come in. But since this does not violate the spirit of what we came up with last time, which is not parking protruding in front of the corner of the house, I, like Mr. Mumgaard, I see no harm in 10 feet because it, in spirit, does not change anything. You know, and I think all of us here are mindful of property rights, but I think after you're here a while, too, you start to realize that that is important. But I think you also have to understand, too, sometimes that it could be a very slippery slope because, like we've dealt with in the past, with people wanting to have pigs in their yard, miniature horses in their yard, goats, and every kind of livestock you can imagine, you have, I think you have to have some consideration what effect it has on people living in that neighborhood. But in any case, I'm going to support it. I don't think it violates any spirit of the law we currently have.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Motion passes. Thank you. Item F6. Ordinance 1836. An ordinance to amend Chapter 24 Elections of the Papillion Municipal Code to add a new section requiring written notice of a proposed ordinance to redraw ward boundaries to be sent to residences which would move into a different ward as a result of such ordinance, and to require three readings of a proposed ordinance to redraw ward boundaries and to prohibit the suspension of any such readings submitted by Councilman Mumgaard. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1836? Motion by Councilman Mumgaard. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Mr. Mumgaard.
Let me explain why I've brought this forward. This is, as I see, an ordinance to try to improve a situation that we're not quite sure we need improvement, but let's give it a try. As you all will recall, last year, we used a process to redraw our ward boundaries that we received great criticism for, and we were accused of shutting the citizens out. I don't think that was fair criticism, but nonetheless, that's the criticism we met. I see that this is going to happen over and over again because we are going to annex areas- areas in the future, inevitable, and ward boundaries are going to change, inevitable. And so I look at what happened last year and say, well, okay, what can we do to make sure that that situation doesn't pop up again in a future city council, us or some other future city council, doesn't get the unjustified criticism we got? As you will recall, the legislature, in fact, passed a law addressed to us saying that you have to have a public, second public hearing on a ward boundary change. So that part of the ordinance that says that incorporates that in the ordinance, that comes from state law, can't do anything about it, that's in the ordinance at the request of the city attorney. So I look at the notification process that's proposed here, very simple. If the boundaries are going to change, the people who are going to move from one boundary to the other, I get a message from the city that tells them they're going to move, they're going to have new council members. Whether they care or not, they're going to get that notice. We will see then if the legislature was right. We will see if having that public hearing is really important to the citizens of Papillion. We will see if anybody comes in and gives us, let's face it, we might be wrong. They might be able to give us some reasons why the boundary should not change the way it is. We don't know what ideas they can come forward with, so I propose we have this process in place so that we maximize the potential that people will come in and tell us what they think, just like we send notices on zoning changes and liquor licenses and all sorts of things. But the calculation based upon the last change, I think that the cost of this is minimal, $1,000 probably at max on any of the larger annexations. So let's give it a try because it certainly will raise the level of accountability. If we tell people what effect our change is going to have on them, they can hold us accountable for that change. It increases the transparency, which were complaints that we heard last year in the legislature, and believe me, the name of Papillion was drugged through the mud in the legislature last year because of what we had done. It will increase the transparency, that, you know, we will tell people, this is what's going to happen to you, you're going to get different council members, and you come in and tell us what you think about it. At minimum, it will perhaps increase citizen participation in their government. I don't see how we can be against that. If you're against that, I don't think you should be sitting on this council to increase citizen participation in their government. Long and short of it is, I think there'll be a minimal cost here, it'll be worth it, we can give it a try. You know, after three or four annexations, if nobody comes in, you know, I've been here long enough that I've gone through several ward changes, and last time was the only time anybody ever said boo about it, so I was a bit surprised. Hey, we might find out that we've been right all along, or we might find out we've been wrong all along, but I think we ought to give it a try, so I encourage everybody to vote for this ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm not going to support this, and there's a few reasons why. Number one, there is a law passed in Lincoln that we have to have the three readings. That's one. Two, we're putting more burden on the staff to get all these, let's say, let's say it's 2,000 people that we're going to send it out to. How do we even know if those people are even voting? Do they even care? There's a lot of negatives to this, and for that reason, with the law already being passed in Lincoln, that's, to me, that's good enough. That's three readings, that's six weeks. If the people are concerned about what's going on, they have six weeks to come up here and talk to us. For us to put that onto the staff to say, hey, you got to send out 1,000 envelopes, for what reason? To me, it's senseless.
Mr. Ingberg.
One of the most valuable things that I learned early on on the city council was told me by the city council president at the time, and I took a little bit of offense to it at first until I thought it through a little bit. We had an issue, it wasn't this issue, but it was an issue where involved notification about something. I don't remember, it's been so long ago, but I was a little put out because I thought, did the city do enough to educate the public? And what they told me was, and you don't need to react to it, but think about it, that was back in the day before email and before, you know, social media and everything else. The city had certain requirements for it to post it, where to have information available for the citizens. Well, what he said to me was this, he said, "Look, Steve, we did everything we possibly humanly could to make the information available to let people know it's out there." He said, "But also realize that if you're a citizen of a community, you also have a certain amount of responsibility to educate yourself about what's going on in your community. If you choose not to participate, you choose not to know what's going on, that's not the city's difficulty, that's yours as a citizen." And that really took a hold of me then. I've had a little different feeling about it. I don't think this last occurrence, we were shutting citizens out from anything, no one was prevented from running for office, and it doesn't matter who it was. That's not the point. The point is, it was a person wanted to run for office, they were still able to, they weren't able to run against the person they wanted to, and I don't think you pass a law in order to eliminate a situation that, to my knowledge, in the last 27 years, it's only happened one time. And the thing about it is, you don't want to gum up what you do and automatically assume the worst, which is the city did something wrong. As a matter of fact, as Tom said, you know, justifiably so, I guess we were criticized and that, and I would second that because the reason we did what we did in the timeframe we did it was to make sure that everybody that was annexed were able to vote in the upcoming election. To me, that is worrying about democracy. That's worrying about making sure that people that are part of your community have a say in voting for who they want to represent them. It wasn't to penalize any person or any group of people. It was done in the greater theme of making sure everybody had the opportunity to vote for their government. So I'm not going to support it. I think it's a good transparency idea, but I'm not convinced it's necessary now, especially in light of the state making the changes they've made. Everybody should know about it, especially after we discussed it tonight, and I thank you for bringing it up, Tom, for no other reason. At least now, everybody knows that in the future, you know, depending on how annexations fall, maybe it will be delayed somewhat because we have a new timeline we have to follow according to the state. I hope it doesn't happen that way, but that's it. I'm going to let it go for that.
Thank you. Mr. Glover.
I think Gene and Steve both make good points. I don't think it's going to make any difference. We have a state law that we have to follow, but the ex-principal in me comes out and says, you know, is it going to hurt if we send out one more time? If there's been a change, though, if you want to have the opportunity to vote or run for office, you can do that. I went back and forth over this thing, and I don't think it's going to make any difference, but I'm going to vote for it just for the reason that I think if it opens communication to one more person, it's probably worth doing.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Mr. Glover. I have to say, you're right. I mean, the gentlemen over here are right about today, we have emails and there's a lot more means of communication, social media, but at the same time, I think we have to remember, too, people today are a lot busier, I think. People's lives are quite busy. You've got two income earner households almost everywhere now. The single earner household, married couples, pretty rare nowadays, a lot more rare than it was when I was a kid, that's for sure. So, you know, giving everybody one more chance to find out about what's going on in their community is a good thing. It's not a bad thing. I don't see what harm can come of it, and rightly or wrongly, the perception was there that Papillion was unfair. I don't think Papillion meant to be unfair. I agree with Mr. Ingberg, that wasn't the purpose of it, but that was the perception in other quarters, and so this can help, hopefully, put an end to that kind of talk about our community, and I think this kind of, you know, transparency is something we could all be proud of, so I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I just have a question, because it typically comes up at the time, and I'm toying one way or the other with regard to the vote, because I agree also that, you know, the state law, in my opinion, took care of the issue, but a question with regard to annexation. So typically, it occurs during the annexation or after the annexation process goes through. What information is sent out to citizens that are in the areas that are being annexed? Are they notified?
Are you talking about an annexation or about a boundary move?
Talking about an annexation.
I'll look to Ms. Myers to talk about the annexation process, please.
Well, I believe there's some public requirements. Public notice has to be sent in advance of the annexation. After the annexation is effective, then certainly we send a follow-up letter talking about what services will be provided by the city and what changes maybe have occurred from them operating as an SID, if that be the case. So, but there are, I think your point is what notices are sent in advance of an annexation, and I believe there's one at a planning commission for the public hearing and then a follow-up at city council, so they'd be receiving two public notices.
And those are the legally required ones. In addition, staff would have met with the elected SID boards ahead of time, so the elected officials in those areas would have been met with as well, and so they would have their, they would know it's coming.
So do we go through and actually send an individual postcard notification to every resident within the SID?
After the annexation, we send a letter to everyone.
Okay. So after the annexation takes place, we send a letter notifying them?
And that would be before any redistricting would have occurred?
Correct. So isn't that an opportunity at that time to include a notification with regard to a change with the ward boundary?
We could probably hint at it, but at that point in time, we probably haven't started the process.
I understand that.
But we've let the potentials come in.
Right. At least the citizens know that every one of those citizens will know that there's a potential that they're going to be included in a certain ward.
That would be for the new residents coming in as a result. It would not be to the existing residents that are in city limits.
But it's just another opportunity to get the word out.
Correct.
That there will be some redistricting that will take place. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mumgarden.
Well, yeah, I just want to, Mr. Stube, you bring up a good point, that we already go through the process, quite an extensive process, of telling our new citizens that they are going to be new citizens. That's good, but keep in mind, these are different people than who, what my ordinance applies to. My ordinance applies to the people who've been longtime citizens of Papillion, and to think that they're going to find out, well, nobody can tell at the time of annexation whether they will or won't change wards. Nobody can tell by looking at a, you know, at an agenda item whether that applies to them or not. Unless you actually look at the map, you won't be able to tell. So, you know, I certainly respect the idea that, well, I think that, well, okay, if we're going to go through the process of telling the new citizens that their life is changing, their interaction with the city is changing, why don't we just go through the process of telling the old citizens that their life and their interactions with the city is changing, because it's changing, too. That's all I'm trying to do, is make sure that they're aware of it, and sure, they have responsibilities to keep track of what's going on, but don't kid yourself. Do you really know people out there that do? Heavens, no. So I don't, I just, I'm not negating the responsibility of citizens to pay attention, but I'm trying to be real about it.
Any other council discussion? If not, please vote.
Five yeas, three nays by Jaworski, Cluuk, and Ingberg.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items, no committees have remet. Do we have any comments from the floor? We'll get some students with us. You guys can't leave. You've got to come up and introduce yourself. If you're a student, come up, tell us what's bringing you out. Start lining up, because we're going to wait for you.
Should I begin? My name's Aiden Hatfield. I go to Papillion La Vista South High School, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's class. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
My name's, whoa. My name's Mason North, and I'm here for the exact same reason he is.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hunter Utz. I go to Papillion La Vista South. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's class.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lane Rainforth, Papio South. I'm here because of Mr. Keller as well, but I think this is kind of interesting, so I'm going to stick around for a little bit.
Hi.
I'm Trey Dotson, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's class, too.
I'm Zoe Petrasch. I'm here for Mr. Keller's class.
I'm Alicia Seerison, and I'm here for Mr. Keller's class. Thank you, guys.
You can pull the mic down for her.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Our Girl Scout troop, 4-1-806, from Papillion School District, a group of junior, fourth graders and fifth graders are learning about how to make change in their city government and how to participate in having a vote and a voice in their community.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Any council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. Project Harmony had their luncheon. Chief, thanks for participating in that amazing work that they do, and if people are not familiar with it, you might be interested in learning. And then had a ribbon cutting downtown, MJ Sewing and Vinyl Sply, another downtown business, a unique story that they've got. Councilman Ingberg and myself, along with Congressman Bacon, Senator Arch, and Chairman Kelly, attended an appreciation event at Veterans Park, and then I was called upon to judge the wagon wheel pine wood derby for the Boy Scouts. That was the major events for the week. Oh, yeah, and a reminder of what Ms. Myers had mentioned, cleanup days, 25th to the 28th, and then also Arbor Day on the 26th, so put those on the calendar. Any other council comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Second by Councilman Glover. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you.